Ladies and gentlemen, it's time to start the meeting. I'd like to officially call the rural Madison County土地局business session for February the 18th of 2020 to order. Ask our secretary to call, please.
Roy Switzer?
Here.
Drew Alexander?
Here.
Bill Buchanan?
Here.
Mary Iper?
Here.
Doug Fritz?
Here.
Shannon Pennington?
Here.
Robert Farm?
Here. With the record show, we do have a quorum. And first order of business is approval of the minutes. Everyone should receive a copy of the minutes in their packet. Is there any corrections or additions to the minutes as received? If not, then a motion to be in order for approval.
I'll make a motion for approval.
Have a motion to approve, is your second?
I'll second.
Have a motion in second. Any further discussion? If not, we'll have a vote.
Mary Iper?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Doug Fritz?
Yes.
Shannon Pennington?
Yes.
Roy Switzer?
Yes.
Drew Alexander?
Yes.
Bill Buchanan?
Yes.
Robert Farm?
Yes. Next on our agendas, welcome some new members. Bert?
Yeah, so, uh, Mary Iper. We'll start with Mary. This is Mary's first meeting, obviously. Uh, Mary, you want to just tell us a little bit about yourself and introduce yourself to everybody? So we welcome you.
I'm Mary Iper. I was born and raised in Madison County. Left after high school, was gone about fifteen years, and been back close to twenty now. My husband and I developed part of Vineyard Estates in Berea. We built, custom-built homes for several years. Now we do, um, energy efficiency. And, um, we raise our family here in Madison County, and this is home.
Welcome to the hall.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Next, Bill Buchanan, Bill. You want us to call you Bill, or you want us to call you like?
Well, my name's Bill, but everybody calls me Bucky.
Okay.
So you can call me Bucky. Everybody else does.
Tell us a little bit about yourself.
Yep, so, uh, originally from Pike County, Belfry. Went to school here at E K U. I met my wife here, lived here almost twenty years now. I work at Army Depot, Rebecca Parsons Bluegrass, Environmental Permitting Manager. So, um, kind of plugged in community, really looking forward to the opportunity. Glad to be here.
Make sure you get the opportunity to meet and meet everybody as we go forward here.
Okay. Uh, next on our agendas, election of officers.
I'll make the motion that we keep it the way that it is, and be the chairman.
So for the new members, uh, Robert is the first chairman, Shannon is the vice chairman. Um, so we, every year, we have to have elections before that goes provision. Uh, this is our first meeting of the year, that's why we're going to next one.
Have a motion to keep the officers as were in, uh, 2019. Is your second?
I'll second that motion.
Have a motion in second, if further discussion?
Nobody else?
If not, we'll have a vote.
Roy Switzer?
Yes.
Drew Alexander?
Yes.
Bill Buchanan?
Yes.
Mary Iper?
Yes.
Doug Fritz?
Yes.
Shannon Pennington?
Yes.
Robert Farm?
Yes. Next on the agendas, approve of the 2020 meeting schedule. Bert?
Yeah, also, this is what, what we do at the beginning of the year, first meeting of the year. We set the agenda, the, uh, the meeting times for the year. So we're proposing to keep everything the same with the work session on the first Tuesday of each month, and the business session on the third Tuesday of each month at 5:30 here in the courtroom. Um, provided we have something for the agenda.
Okay. I guess we could need to do that as a motion to approve that?
Yeah, we could approve that.
Okay. I'll open the floor for a motion then.
I'll make a motion that we approve that agenda.
I'll second.
Have a motion to approve in second. Any further discussion? If not, we'll have a vote.
Shannon Pennington?
Yes.
Doug Fritz?
Yes.
Mary Iper?
Yes.
Bill Buchanan?
Yes.
Drew Alexander?
Yes.
Roy Switzer?
Yes.
Robert Farm?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we approve that agenda.
I'll second.
Have a motion to approve in second. Any further discussion? If not, we'll have a vote.
Shannon Pennington?
Yes.
Doug Fritz?
Yes.
Mary Iper?
Yes.
Bill Buchanan?
Yes.
Drew Alexander?
Yes.
Roy Switzer?
Yes.
Robert Farm?
Yes. Next order of business is a zone change for 1650 Berea Road from UC One Residential to UC Four General Commercial. Uh, Bert, has all the proper locations been made for the owner?
Yeah, sign's been up for a couple of weeks. Uh, I have it put in the paper, letters. I actually just had one surrounding property owner that wasn't the applicant, except for the Army Depot across the street. Saw those letters were sent out to me.
Okay. Good, this time I recognize the applicant as legal counsel. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, my name's Kenny Durson. I'm an attorney in Berea, Kentucky, and I represent the property owners Jerry, Wanda, Little. They've made application for a zone change, as previously mentioned, from UC One to UC Four for 1650 Berea Road. It, uh, now is zoned for a single-family residential, and we were wanting to change it to general commercial. The reason we're asking for that is there's been a basic change in the character of the area out there. I don't know that everybody's aware or not, but the state of Kentucky has been condemning property along Dunn Cannon Lane and south of 25 at that intersection. And they've taken properties from, uh, from several different lots out there. This being one of them. This is Lot 17, originally in Cumberland View subdivision. It was a one-acre lot. It was subdivided back in 1961, and a single-family residence was bu- was built on it and was there up until this past year. The state of Kentucky condemned the property, ended up in negotiations, and bought the property from the property owner, uh, and then tore the building down. So the residence is no longer there. When they purchased the property, however, they only bought the front portion of it. So they left 0.5 acres of, of the lot, uh, in the rear part of it, and that's what Mr. and Mrs. Little have purchased and are now asking for a zone change from a single-family residential to, to commercial. Mr. and Mrs. Little own the property west of that and north of that. This property is a, uh, commercial all around it, except on the south. There's still a single-family residence to the south of this property, and, uh, the house is there. I don't know whether anything about that, whether that will stay or not. But again, at this point in time, there's really nothing that this lot can be used for, uh, since we've got less than an acre. There can't be a residence put back on it. Uh, and he wants to go ahead and add it basically to, to his other property, use it for commercial purposes. Uh, so I think the, the zone at this time is inappropriate, but it also should, should meet your other standard that, that there's been a change there that has altered, altered this property.
So is, it's his intention to, uh, rezone that property to match existing property and then consolidate it?
Actually, I don't know whether he's going to consolidate it or not, but he's going to use it for commercial purposes. The property to the west, I believe, is zoned...
UC Five.
UC Five. And to the north is UC Four. And he wants to change it to UC Four to match up the other lot that, that, uh, is, uh, adjacent to him that fronts on the highway. That lot there, uh, there was a building there also that, that was, was torn down, also that Mr. Mr. Little owned. Uh, and then there's also the, uh, the gas station at the corner. There may be some changes to that also.
Okay.
Let me just interject here, just for saying, was it important, what you were just talking about, the house, uh, to the south of that, um, that you mentioned, you didn't know what they were doing. But I actually spoke to, that's one of the, the letters that we sent out. I actually spoke to the owner of that property. He didn't have any objections to this zone change. In fact, he inquired about what he could do to change the zone on, on his property as well. So I just wanted to throw that in there at this time.
Bert, do you know the current use of the UC Four that Mr. Little owns? Or maybe Mr. Little could tell us what he's using?
Well, it's a gas station, and then where the blue arrows are now, uh, used to be a, uh, it was, it's been a couple of different auto repairs. It's been a towing company. Uh, where the blue arrows are, are the building that you were talking about that has since been torn down. Uh, but the property to the west, uh, the applicant property is actually Zone Five, which is industrial. The property to the north is Zone Four.
His, his request on this is UC Four, and the adjacent UC Four is the gas station property?
Yeah, I'll click on that right now for you. So the, uh, the yellow is the applicant's property, actually about half of what that's showing here, because the front half, like he said, has been taken. Uh, the purple is the five where the storage units are, and then the red, the four, is where the gas station and the now torn-down building at.
So this property would be next to another UC Four and a UC Five that's currently used as a gas station?
It's adjacent to a five, and a four, and a one on the, on the south. That's right. If you all remember, a few months ago, we did a, a change on a property just south of this.
That bit from stop. Down here.
Yeah.
The bottom of the screen there.
Right in here. It's not, the map's not reflecting it yet, but it was, it was right in, right here. So this, Jerry, you've seen the plan, just kind of just, that they're kind of taking that curve out, uh, when they go wide in that road down.
Two houses up is where you did the change after the...
Get, what color was it?
I swear I made it. I said it. Yeah, Jerry, just a minute, just a minute. If he wants to talk, come on off, Bert. He might, he, he might have to say a few words here in just a minute.
Okay, or the, or the board could just take Bert's, uh, statements as well, without being sworn in, as to who wants to...
Bert?
Uh, whatever you prefer, Mr. Bert.
Uh, if, if that's sufficient, I'm fine with it.
It's, it's up to the board, but if, if that wouldn't be proof they could take is what, is the statements Bert's made about the UC Four and UC Five.
Bert, did the, uh, the adjacent property owner, the UC One, did they talk about taking any of the house for them?
They didn't mention that.
Did it not?
They didn't mention that, of course. That house may sit a little bit further off the road than the one they actually tore down.
It does, it sits kind of...
So this is the one that they tore down right here.
Mm-hmm.
And you can see this one. And of course, without having seen the plan, I don't know how the road...
They're talking about even taking some of the canopy and the...
The gas station.
Gas station, is that accurate to him, Bert?
Okay. Any other comment or questions for...
There one of the, there is a buffer basically between this property and that, and that family, uh, single-family residence that's to the south. This property, uh, drains down to a creek, and there, there's a creek that runs between the two of them, and it's pretty, it's wooded too. Looks like wood and brushy there, so it's, I, I don't, I, I, I'm not speaking for the other property owner, but this is not going to be harmful, it doesn't seem, to that, that residence there.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
What type of sewer is out there for all these properties right along that is?
I'm not aware of any sewer that's available, but anything that's in the county out there.
So it's not attached to the Richmond, because the industrial park right there behind it, and that's...
I don't know where's a Richmond sewer.
But I don't know where their sewer comes to.
It comes on, it comes on Canalway.
Mr. Little, there's not any sewer out there, is there? So they're using septic tanks?
Septic tanks, okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments? Okay. This time, is there anyone in the audience here to address this zone change? Have any comments or questions? Okay. I'll ask the commission one more time, is there any comments or... If not, then I'll reopen the floor for a moment.
Uh, I'll make a motion that we approve the zone change for 1650 Berea Road, Richmond, Kentucky, from UC One to UC Four, based off the fact, according to the section 402.4 of the Land Use Regulation Development, is encouraged along the, uh, transportation corridor, uh, according to the comp plan. Section regarding the land use made in regard statement, it tells us that we need to encourage that development within that corridor as well. Uh, this property being joint on two sides by, one by UC Four and one by UC Five, and both of them being owned by the same person, I think the zoning at this time is inappropriate, it would be better suited to be UC Four.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the zone change, is our second to the motion?
I'll second.
Have a motion in second. Any further discussion?
Jim, I have a question. He referenced the transportation corridor in his motion. It's actually the urban corridor. Can he correct that, or does that need to be corrected?
I mean, both of them are, but you, you meant...
The transportation corridor lies within the urban corridor according to the map. We can talk wherever you want.
Okay, alright, I'm sure.
Call it the urban corridor.
The reader's...
I think they're both...
Motion being changed into the urban, state, the urban corridor, urban corridors to the...
Second with the change.
Yes.
In the second. Okay, any further discussion? If not, we'll have a vote.
Roy Switzer?
Yes.
Drew Alexander?
Yes.
Bill Buchanan?
Yes.
Mary Iper?
Yes.
Doug Fritz?
Yes.
Shannon Pennington?
Yes.
Robert Farm?
Yes. And Bert, uh, this will be going to the fiscal board for approval?
Obviously, the fiscal board for touring, for an ordinance, uh, and that'll be on the next available agenda.
Thank you very much.
And next on our agenda is a cell tower, 2494 Lexington Road. Has all the location been made for the cell tower?
Yes.
Public location?
They have.
Okay.
Yeah. Got a whole list of them. That's your mail, if you want. Check them out, but I didn't, so if you're back here.
Okay, did you have anything you want to open with before I recognize?
Yeah, any of this?
Yeah. Killed a few trees to bring this one to the agenda. Um, I will just, uh, give y'all, if you're not familiar with the property, uh, location, then I'll let, uh, the F A D come up and, and, uh, have their presentation. Um, if you're going out Lexington Road, um, you pass the old drive-in, you pass the state garage, uh, I guess I just erased that. And then you pass Colonel Road on your right. You start back up the hill, there's a driveway, a little gate. If y'all have been out there, you saw a sign, if not, there's a gate there, an entrance. That's going to be the actual entrance. Um, the cell site itself is just a little bit north of that. Um, sits up kind of on a hill, it's actually kind of hard to see from, from Lexington Road. I swear I'll get it on the map for you here in just a second. So generally, run this area right here, pretty close to it there? Yeah, okay.
Okay. You ready me to recognize?
Yeah, I'm ready, yeah.
Yes. Please come to the opponent and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Russell Brown. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Clark Quinn Moses Scott and Gronn. Uh, 320 North Meridian Street, Suite 1100 in Indianapolis. I'm a licensed attorney in both the Commonwealth of Kentucky and the state of Indiana.
Okay.
Uh, happy to be here tonight with you, with me tonight also, Elizabeth Williams, who is a land use planner in our office, and Preston Patton, who is the site acquisition for this site. So I'll walk you through some details on the site. You do have a bunch of, uh, details in the uniform application that have been submitted. Uh, I'll, I'll walk through them, make specific reference to a couple of the attachments. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. Uh, this is an application by Verizon Wireless, partnering with EcoSite, who is a custom co-location builder for Verizon Wireless. Request tonight is for the construction of a 260-foot tower, a 255-foot tower with a five-foot lightning rod to be located, as, as been described for you this evening. The property is a large parcel that landowner owns, this parcel, as well as three parcels to the south. Uh, all of those parcels have some agricultural improvements, but otherwise are, are generally unimproved. So there's not any part, uh, anything significant, uh, on the, those existing parcels. This location was chosen for a variety of reasons on the property. Uh, one is to utilize some of that topography to get, height is important when you're talking about cell towers. Uh, so to get a little bit of extra height. You also get the ability to have screening from those, uh, properties to the east of some of the base equipment. Utilize a little bit of a rise, uh, between the tower location and those, uh, those homes. So you get some of the ground equipment that's screened, visually screened from, uh, from those sites. Uh, this is a tower to be, uh, to be constructed and utilized for Verizon Wireless, and up to two additional carriers. So there's both tower space and ground space for those two additional carriers. It would be, uh, the ground equipment would be located in a 75 by 75 compound. It would have a six-foot, uh, bar, six-foot chain-link fence with one foot of barbed wire on top of it to protect that ground equipment. It is a lattice design, it is not a guide tower, so there are no wires that are coming down. Verizon is confirmed as the top tenant, so a 250-foot center line, that would be the top, the top tenant here. At this height, it does require lighting by the FAA, so it would be top of tower and mid-tower. Uh, the ground equipment lighting would be limited to just an emergency, uh, emergency lighting. Otherwise, uh, the equipment on, on ground is relatively uninvasive, invasive. You do have a emergency generator that's located there. It's tested on a monthly, or a weekly basis by Verizon Wireless. Otherwise, then only runs in the event of an emergency. It's generally either diesel-fed or natural gas-fed, depending on, in this location, probably diesel-fed. Uh, it would be, uh, there is, uh, in the file, uh, we do have our RF statement of need, uh, which discusses the design considerations we've utilized here. I believe that's attachment T. Uh, discusses why, uh, co-location opportunities weren't utilized here. Specifically, there are no other existing towers within approximately a little bit more than a mile of this tower. Uh, this search ring is about a mile north to south. Uh, so when we're looking for a site, we're looking for a very specific area to, to go into those existing, uh, the existing network that exists today. So there aren't any towers, uh, within, uh, approximately a mile. As you continue to go north out of the county, along I-75, uh, there, there are a couple that are right close to the county line, but otherwise, there are none north. Uh, and as you get further south, Verizon is already on a number of those towers that are located south of this proposed location. Uh, these, we are generally now in the business of doing what we would call capacity sites. I've been doing this work for 13 years, and when I started, we were still filling in holes in the network. So you still had areas in Indiana and Kentucky where you couldn't make calls. Uh, generally, along major thoroughfares, now you can make calls everywhere, uh, but you have a capacity problem. Meaning there's too many people attempting to address the network at specific times. So we are infilling, uh, that development and, and offloading existing towers. So that's an important part of why the location is very specific. Uh, in our materials as well, you kind of see the before and after. I think that's also a T as well. You see the before and after of what area of, of the county will be covered by this location. Uh, it's important when you look at, at design, at, at traffic usage, the changes in topography, commuting pattern here, obviously, you're servicing a major north-south interstate, part of what you're servicing here through this location, as well as areas of the community and the residential uses further to the east. Uh, here, we're attempting to offload two towers, a tower to the northeast, and then a tower to the south. Uh, the tower to the south I referenced earlier, that's too close that, that Verizon is already on in this location. Uh, a- as you all undoubtedly know, increased capacity and increased coverage is a public safety tool. It's an economic development tool. It's utilized in agriculture, it's utilized in all portions of our current, uh, current society. About more than half of Kentucky households are wireless-only households. Uh, the latest statistic I saw was 52%. Uh, and then six, almost two-thirds of children in Kentucky live in a wireless-only household. So it's becoming more prevalent, and that's how, uh, my, my 11-year-old has never lived in a house that had a landline. Uh, and that's, you know, more and more common as we think about, about what, what communication looks like in our community. About 70% of 911 calls, uh, are made from a wireless device. Uh, so that becomes super important in this type of situation where you would have, could have a catastrophic event along I-75, uh, that would need, uh, that public safety aspect. This height is important for a couple of reasons. The RF letter speaks to the height being important because it fills in, uh, the existing network. It's important to have those at similar heights, so you don't have towers shooting over the top of each other, uh, on those, on that web that is created by the wireless network. It's also important because Verizon is not the only carrier in the market. And so other carriers have needs for, uh, for, for tower locations. Given that you don't have any towers within a couple of miles of this, a mile or two north, and a mile or two south, this becomes a prime opportunity for, uh, for AT&amp;T, or T-Mobile, or someone like that to go on this tower as well. Uh, and EcoSite is a national, or a regional company, uh, that has, uh, agreements with many of those carriers. So they would have the opportunity to come in and co-locate on this, on these existing towers, which is the intent of, of your ordinance, as well as state statute, that encourages a co-location to be the first opportunity spot. Um, so happy to answer any additional questions that you have. We do, we have submitted, with staff's help, uh, submitted the, uh, the uniform application. Believe it's complete, uh, and ready for your approval this evening. With that, happy to answer any questions that you have. We have not received any communication from any surrounding landowners, despite the, our, relatively large stack of letters that went out. So I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission has.
You did say it was self-supporting towers, there's no, no brace wires?
Correct.
Uh, what about lighting? Is it the height that'll have to have a troll light at the top?
Yeah, so it'll be top of tower and mid-tower. That's what the FAA requires.
And the closest one to that, you say two miles?
I'm, I'm using crow flies a little bit on that, but, um, there's nothing within a mile of it, uh, north or south. The one, there's one that's south, it's probably about a mile, a little bit over a mile away. Uh, but the search ring here for, for Verizon was about less than a half a mile north and south of this location, so...
The, the purpose, as far as, uh, the purpose for putting a tower at this location, is it a, um, dead zone, or...
It, it's a, it's an issue where, when we have too much capacity on the existing towers, so Verizon has a, will have a capacity problem on the north, so the, I say northeast and to the south. Um, when that happens, and you have increased occurrences of dropped calls, you have throat, uh, slower throughput speed, so it takes me longer to get on and off the network. Uh, and so the goal here is to actually, when we're doing capacity, we're actually decreasing the, the footprint of existing towers. So instead of trying to cover from here to the door, I might be only trying to cover from here to the table, because that new tower will cover the area from the table to the door. Uh, and so that's what we're trying to do, is decrease the footprint. Um, it's expensive and time-consuming to put up a new tower, so we're always trying to fine-tune existing towers first, and then a new tower is kind of the, the avenue of last resort. Uh, but that, that's the issue, is you'll generally have slower throughput, you'll have dropped calls at high to, at high volume times. So, you know, early in the morning, late at night, as people are using their phones, even though they're not supposed to use your handheld phone anymore, people still use their phone. My kid still, you know, streams YouTube as I drive up and down the interstate. Um, you know, all those things that happen, uh, you know, those are, uh, those impact the, the network. And so trying to get it on and off faster makes it, makes that more accessible for everybody.
So it will be built strong enough to, uh, offer space for other carriers?
Yes, that's correct, yeah.
Up to a fiber hole?
It'll be three, it'll be three carriers total, so Verizon and two additional carriers. Uh, at that height, it does take pretty significant, you know, structure to, to support that equipment up 250 foot in the air. So yeah, Verizon plus two additional carriers.
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
You say it was Eco, what was the name?
EcoSite is one of the, Verizon partners a lot with tower companies and tower builders.
Crown Castle also?
Crown Castle is, uh, uh, American Tower is someone like that. So that, those are companies who just own towers and they lease their space. Uh, so they'll hold the, the ground lease, they'll then lease out ground space and tower space to carriers.
What's the, uh, appetite for, like, say, the county or something wanted to access a tower and rent space? I mean, is that something that some of the companies do better than others, or...
It, it's kind of on a case-by-case, a lot of times we'll have repeaters, you know, emergency repeaters. People will put those up on, on towers, uh, for highway departments, sheriff's departments. Uh, that'll be something that, you know, they don't need as much equipment, because often they're putting just a, a smaller piece of equipment on. So it's not on a case-by-case basis, uh, with those, with those carriers, but generally, you know, they're trying to be good corporate citizens, and so that's something they often will consider.
Nobody complained about there?
Uh, we haven't had any phone calls, to my knowledge, or any, um, or anybody come to the office. I don't know, just for the record, probably the audience, make sure nobody here...
Yeah, I got a question first, I'm dead.
No, we haven't had any call.
Yeah. Um, I have a 335-foot tower behind my house, 330-foot away. But I, I must have had the side lights on the tower. Uh, those don't flash. Those were just for state requirement or...
Yeah, so, so FAA requires top of tower, mid-tower. And so mid-tower, um, is solid, uh, it's, so it's not strobing, and then the top is the, the stroke.
Mission members, any questions?
What kind of access do you have that from the road?
So that we will construct a new drive, so it does use an existing, uh, existing, to call it a cut is generous. Uh, it's a, it's a...
Yeah, there's a, there's a...
There's a, there's a pull-off that exists today with the cattle gate there, and so it'll be a new drive that will come up.
Be a gravel drive?
Be a gravel drive.
Okay.
All utilities will run, all utilities will run on that, that access and, and utility use. Uh, and so that would be adequate for both Verizon and for other carriers.
If you have an emergency on that tire, the electric goes out, and you said you had a generator or something comes on, but is there anybody that goes and checks that, and how, how quick would they do that?
Yeah, so if, if the power is out, that's why Verizon, as a company policy, has generators at every site. There, not every carrier has that, so Verizon does. So if you have a big power outage, you have a big blizzard, I know four or five years ago you had a blizzard where there was lots of power outage for a number of, a number of days. So some, or Verizon tech had to go around and fill up all the diesel generators, but that was something that they did, and they do with regularity. That's, they do have a team that that's their responsibility. They do monthly maintenance visits to the site as well, so they can confirm if anything has happened to the site during that time.
Do you have all the property secured, to be able to monitor?
No, they, they don't, generally do not have, you know, camera or anything like that. It's the reason we put the barbed wire fence on the top, so, and that's generally sufficient to avoid... That's a pretty significant investment, there's, you know, quarter of a million dollars or so in ground equipment that's there. So they're putting, it is locked and not, not generally accessible in addition to the fencing.
This is farmland that's all around this?
Yes.
Is there any, I mean, I know you've got a fence there, but is there any other protection? Cattle or anything like that? Because they will rub on it and they will tear it up over time. So you're, by inspection, you're all going to be taken care of.
Yeah, I mean, so, so you'll have, obviously have that, and then you have an obligation with the landowner to make sure it's secured as well.
So the standby diesel generator, does that have a, do you know if it's an external storage tank for that? Or is it kind of built in?
So generally, we'll have second, it'll have two containment mechanisms on it. So if it's an environmentally sensitive area, then it would generally have three. So it would be, I'm trying to think of where we are in the evolution. They've changed how they utilize it, but generally, it will have a tub or something so that if there's a spill, that it would be self-contained.
And they would catch that during the monthly inspection?
Correct, correct.
And respond to a spill?
Yeah, and if it's particularly environmentally sensitive, if it's within, you know, feet of a wetland or a stream or anything like that, they would then generally use natural gas if that's available, or propane on-site if they can't get natural gas to the site.
Is there anything that tells them that the generator has kicked in, or that there's some type of emergency? Is there a system that tells somebody in a control room somewhere or that? Or is it the person that comes to view it?
It's remotely, it's remotely testable, so I'm assuming... I realize I'm under oath, but, so I'm assuming that it is, that you can determine that remotely, but I'm not one thousand percent sure.
Do you have an estimated completion date?
I don't, so the process generally is, it takes roughly twelve months to get to here. By the time we've negotiated with the landowner, come through permitting process, you know, once we've... And then it's a determination of budgets, which are always changing. I wouldn't be here if it wasn't a priority, because they wouldn't pay me to come, to come make a presentation. Generally, when we're here, that means it's within the next, you know, year, year and a half that I would be in the build plan. Once it starts, it's a very quick process. It takes longer to build the road generally than it does to stack the tower.
Okay, any other questions, commission members?
What happens at the end of the lease term?
Yeah, so there's a, there's a removal provision in the lease. There's, leases are generally between twenty and fifty years, depending on, this one, I think, is a twenty-five-year lease. So there's a, there's a removal obligation by the landlord under the lease. I didn't look at this specifically to know, sometimes it is, the obligation is simply to remove to grade. Sometimes it is to remove to two feet or three feet below grade, but to return it to substantially the condition it existed at the time. So if that's still being farmed, it would be, you'd pull out the footers, pull out all the equipment, pull out the fence, and they would be able to return it to farmland.
Any other questions, commission members? If not, I'll break lines, anyone in the audience here tonight to address this tower application? If not, then I'll open the floor for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the application for a cell tower on twenty-four ninety-four Lexington Road.
Have a motion to approve the cell tower application, is there second to the motion?
I'll say it.
Have a motion and second, any further discussion? If not, we'll have a vote.
Mary Iver?
Yes.
Doug Fritz?
Yes.
Shannon Pennington?
Yes.
Drew Alexander?
Yes.
Drew Alexander?
Yes.
Roy Switzer?
Yes.
Robert Farmer?
Yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Next, all business is new business. Would you follow us around a little, new to bring to the commission?
Uh, no, I don't know anything, that's it, thank you all for speaking through the round of paperwork.
I mean, I was planning to look at the, the work session, and get that ready for this.
We did not, we're talking about that, a little bit of a confusion on this part, but we'll deal with that.
No, all the bids come before the commission, and a motion being ordered to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
How about that?
Mary Iver?
Yes.
Doug Fritz?
Yes.
Shannon Pennington?
Yes.
Drew Cannon?
Yes.
Drew Alexander?
Yes.
Roy Switzer?
Yes, sir.
You said that you all worked, worked business with each other.
I don't need it.
I usually get mine back in front of mine.